I'd like to call this March 9th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that all of our school board members are in attendance tonight along with our division superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, our clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, along with members of our division leadership team, and our finance and budget group is with us tonight. We will turn things over at this point to our student liaisons. Tonight is Sierra Lewis, and she's going to make some introductions.
Good evening, everyone. We have Mr. Makia Mitchell here tonight from Burbank Elementary School. He is in the 3rd grade. He enjoys video games, sports, and spending time with his family. Makia, you have your family here tonight, don't you?
Messiah.
Messiah, I'm sorry, Messiah. I'm so sorry. You have your family here tonight?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce them?
This is my dad, Mr. Mitchell.
All right.
This is my stepmom, Mrs. Mitchell.
Aww.
One of my big brothers, Nasir. My teacher, this is one else.
Aww.
My principal, Ms. Hyde, and the assistant principal, Ms. Francis.
Ms. Francis? Thank you for that awesome introduction of your support. All right, are you going to lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see you've been practicing. Good job. Go ahead with your...
Hello. My name is Messiah Mitchell. I am nine years old and in the 3rd grade at Burbank Elementary School. My favorite subject is math because I like to work with numbers to try and figure out challenging problems. I would like to read a poem that I found about education. The author is unknown. The name of the poem is "My School Promise." Each day I'll do my best and I won't do any less. My work will always please me and I won't accept a mess. I'll color very carefully, my writing will be neat, and I will not be happy till my papers are complete. I'll always do my homework and try my very best on every test. I won't forget my promise to do my very best. Hope you enjoy my poem.
Great job.
Oh, Messiah, we did enjoy your poem. That was just perfect. And what we hope every student kind of uses that same mantra every day when they come to school. They're great. Oh, you have some?
I have more.
Really? Okay.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Education is very important to me. My teacher, Mrs. Funkhouser, graduated from ODU. I plan to work hard in school so one day I can graduate from ODU also. I want to thank everyone for giving me this opportunity, especially my teacher, Mrs. Funkhouser.
Oh, Mrs. Funkhouser. That was super. Are you done now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making sure. Yes, sir.
Messiah?
Yes.
You know I'm proud of you, and you and your brother. They participated in our HAV program, football, basketball. They're super athletes, and now you're a super student. That means if you can do one, you can do the other. Both of you guys.
Yeah.
Just keep doing your best, and we'll all be proud of you guys, okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Messiah, and thank you very much for sharing with us tonight. And you may want to stay for a while because we're going to be working on our budget tonight. A lot of numbers coming out. I don't know if your dad and mom are up for that, but that was a perfect opening for our budget night. We thank you very much for coming out and giving us such a nice invocation to start our meeting.
You're welcome.
Have a great rest of your year, and we wish you much success on the football field and in the classroom.
Thank you.
We'll move on tonight to our consent agenda. It consists of item 2.01, which is a field trip. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. That takes us right into our superintendent and staff reports. We are looking forward tonight to Dr. Smith's presentation of our budget, and I will turn things over at this time to you, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll go down to the podium so that...
Very well.
We'll use the podium.
Use the clicker?
Use the clicker there.
Yes, yeah.
Great. Good evening to you. It is my pleasure to present to you for consideration the superintendent's recommended operating budget for the school year of 2016 to 2017. I believe that this budget moves us one step closer to meeting our mission of every child, every day, whatever it takes, as we focus our efforts toward that of our core business of teaching and learning. As you're aware, the development of the budget has been a collaborative process which was basically driven by your priorities as a board, which, that of course, of student achievement, transforming student learning through the academies, attracting and retaining an exceptional staff, in particular, compensation, and restoring that of the previous reduction of supplements. Two of your three priorities, that have student achievement, transforming student learning through academies, and attracting and retaining an exceptional staff, in particular, compensation, are directly addressed in the FY 2017 recommended budget. And the third priority, specifically, the restoration of supplements, will be addressed through a review and study process with future recommendations brought to the board at a later date. It is important for us to focus our attention and certainly to be reminded of the journey which has led us to the development of the FY 2017 budget. And prior to me getting into the details in terms of the journey, which is that has led us to the development of the FY 2017 budget, I really want to pause and ask members of the division leadership team to stand in, in particular, those persons in our finance office, and to recognize their hard work and their participation in this process as well. So please stand. It has been a collaborative process, and of course, as I mentioned earlier, we certainly took into consideration, and a major driver was that of the board's priorities in the development of this particular budget. And so, let me start with the journey. As you're aware, the journey in terms of, which has led us to the development of the FY 2017 budget, of course, budget scenarios since 2019 have been very challenging. You're familiar, and we're all familiar, with the loss of $24 million in state funding and the impact that certainly it has had on Hampton City Schools and our work here. The per pupil funding certainly has declined, and you know without me having to get into the specific details of that particular decline as it relates to the per pupil funding and the decline there. We have also, of course, as a part of the journey, in Hampton, of course, eliminated nearly 25% of the workforce and the impact with regards to that. Also, a part of the journey relative to that of the development of this particular budget, we also understand that the compensation increases have been sporadic, and certainly in cases where the board wanted to move forward in this community, we've not been able to do so, given the downturn of the economy based on previous years. The journey also, we take into consideration, and we certainly remember that the school divisions' response to revenue reductions over the past several years in addition to the reduction of force. In particular, we're familiar with the school closures, salary reduction, employee and spousal benefits reductions, health insurance cost increases, delay in schedules of replacements, in particular buses and technology, program reductions and outsourcing, and of course, the reduction of contract days. And then full-time employees in terms of the reduction there to part-time. And so, the list goes on relative to the challenges of previous years prior to the development of this particular budget of FY 2017. And while at the same time, we have experienced challenges across the Commonwealth and not unlike other school divisions, certainly Hampton has certainly had that impact in terms of those challenges. While at the same time, we recognize that the funding has decreased, the needs of our students continue to increase. The rigor of standards and assessments have increased in recent years, and unfunded mandates have been added, and we've highlighted certainly some of those unfunded mandates. All of this certainly at a time when we have less staff and fewer dollars. And so, where are we now relative to the development of this budget? We believe that it's the best revenue scenario in years, given the challenges of previous years. And so, we look at the local composite index. We had a slight drop in the local composite index, and you will note the slight change there in the composite index. State revenue up by 4.14 million, included in the governor's budget, funding for 18 elementary instructional positions. Local contribution increase noted here. And so, I want to talk to you a little bit in terms of, given that information as the backdrop, our budget process, and to talk a little bit about the budget process and what we use in terms of going forward in building this particular budget. And so, all new budget requests were reviewed through the lens of the strategic plan at three specific levels. At the department level, division leadership also reviewed all requests, and certainly there was the filtering process in terms of looking at the strategic plan. And then we had a priority decision matrix as also a part of the decision-making process. And so, I think it's very important just to share this information with you as it relates to how we moved forward in the development of the FY 2017 budget. We provided you as members of the board with the criteria prior to moving forward and having the discussions at the superintendent level and the senior leadership in terms of the division leadership team. And so, we shared that criteria with you prior to moving forward with any discussion relative to the development of this budget. From that particular point, we shared the criteria with members of our team, and so, we believe that this budget really, in going forward and sharing it with you, had an excellent process in terms of a lens and a filtering process based upon our new strategic plan. And so, aligning to our strategic plan, we look at budget discussions, we're analyzed through the lens of how the funding advances our strategic goals. And in particular, when we look at maximizing every child's learning, safe nurturing environment, and exceptional staff, attracting and certainly retaining an exceptional staff. And so, I want to focus your attention, really, on this particular conceptual framework of the goals, the core goals that we believe really served as drivers in the development process of the FY 2017 budget. And so, it was maximizing every child's learning, safe and nurturing environment, and then, of course, to make certain that we had in place as a part of this process, attracting and retaining an exceptional staff. You're familiar with this particular slide. We want to talk a little bit about compensation because this was certainly a priority of the school board and the community. And I think it's important to highlight here that, as a part of the development of the strategic plan, your foresight and leadership was very important, and the community was engaged in that process. And of course, the board, you as a board spoke with one voice and provided us with that priority in terms of compensation. We also heard, in addition to your voice as a board, that of the community through the community priorities workshop, internal and external stakeholders, all of these groups supported increase in compensation for employees as an essential goal. And so, I think that this evening, as we present the budget and really talk about the budget, you will see that compensation was certainly a priority in the development of this budget. And so, let's talk a little bit about compensation. The budget includes a minimum of 3% salary increase for full and part-time employees, funds allocated to addressing the entry level of the teacher scale. And I think it's important for me to note here that we understand in the development of the budget that to really address, to fully address, the teacher salary scale or acknowledgement, that that is a multi-year process. And so, this is a beginning point for us in terms of addressing the teacher salary scale or the teacher salary adjustment document. And so, I want to highlight that this is a beginning point for us, for us moving forward. And so, I think it's also important to note that it's a part of the compensation that we have a compensation study underway. The results are expected the fall of 2016, and we believe that we'll begin moving forward with some kind of implementation and recommendations in time for the 2017, 2018, for that, for the development of that particular budget. Again, I think it's important, important to note that we, we know that that will be a multi-year process and plan moving forward, and so, we will continue to engage certainly you as a board once we get that information. But that's very important to highlight as a part of the compensation here. Talk a little bit about the health insurance. And so, compensation, and then when we talk about the compensation package in general, of course, we always talk about health insurance. The table on the right represents our current insurance rates plus an 8.1% increase. This is what an employee would pay if they have not completed the wellness incentive by June 30th of 2016. And then, of course, the table on the left represents a $50 monthly discount on the proposed rates on the right for those who have completed the wellness incentive by June 30th of 2016. For those on the consumer-driven health plan, which we refer to as the CDHP plan, there is only one rate table shown at the bottom of the left there. And so, rather than a discounted premium, they get an additional $500 added to their health savings account, their HSA, by Hampton City Schools for those who complete the wellness And so, let's move into the details of the FY 2017 recommended budget. And so, I've provided you really with, with a backdrop relative to the compensation piece and the health insurance, and so, we'll get into the details. When we look at the development of the budget, and of course, the developing this budget is certainly not a new process for me. This is the ninth budget that I've had an opportunity to develop as a superintendent. And so, we clearly understand that the drivers for developing any budget as it relates to school divisions, developing budget, that we have to have a good handle on our enrollment. And so, the enrollment is certainly a driver for developing the budget. And so, we have provided you with the enrollment based upon our ADM for the FY 2017. For the development of this budget, it's based on 19,500 students, which of course is down from, by 200 from FY 2016. We also know that in addition to looking at the enrollment, that another driver for developing the budget is really that of the composite index, and I mentioned that earlier. So, those two factors, when you're developing the budget, you really look at the student enrollment and also the composite index, especially on the state revenue side of the ledger. And so, this is really just to highlight and to share with you what this budget is based on in terms of student enrollment, and we talked about the composite index earlier. And so, those are two major factors that we really consider as drivers in developing the budget when we look at the state revenue side of the ledger. I think it's important to talk a little bit about the governor's proposed budget. And so, of course, based on the governor's proposed budget, and we understand that the General Assembly will certainly post something within, if they have not already posted, shortly, their adopted budget. But please know that this budget is based on what we had as the most current information. That's the governor's budget, which is not unlike other school divisions, which use the governor's budget to develop certainly their school division budget. So, let's look at the governor's budget and what the governor basically included in terms of his proposed budget. An increase in the Virginia retirement system in terms of our rate from 15.12 to 15.77. And so, in dollars, what does that really, that ultimately would equate to $630,000 in terms of increase. We'll highlight that a little bit later on, but just to give you some perspective in terms of the costs there. And so, when we go back, really talk about that $4 million increase, you know, we have to understand and put that in context based upon what are some of the other non-negotiables or other drivers relative to the governor's budget. And so, we look at the VRS. No compensation supplement in the governor's budget introduced for FY 2017 for the budget, but 2% of course included for FY 18. That may very well change based upon the General Assembly's adopted budget. And we do understand that in between the House and the Senate, the discussion that took place, and so, we anticipate that there may be some change there. We will see once all of the information has been posted. And so, you know, the Senate version of the budget pulled compensation, the compensation supplement, our finance deputy superintendent would say back to December 1st, and the superintendent would say forward to December 1st. But either way, to recognize that the Senate made a slight change in terms of that particular compensation. And of course, when we look at the governor's budget, fully funds re-benchmarking of the standards of, the standards of quality. And when we look at re-benchmarking, of course, re-benchmarking is really the process of updating the state's cost of the current direct aid programs, all state funding to K-12 education into the new biennium, and it is based on, as they look at the previous local expense of the previous years. And so, that's important to note there. And then, of course, included in the governor's budget, funds for one SOQ position per elementary school, 18 total for Hampton City Schools, included in the governor's budget. And of course, when we talk about SOQ positions in general, to give us some perspective, those positions would include principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors, teachers, librarians, and instructional assistants would fall certainly. Those are examples of SOQ-funded positions, and so, that was included in the governor's budget, one per elementary school class. Let's look at the projected revenue for FY 2017. We'll start with SOQ programs and that of basic aid. Again, when we look at SOQ programs, you have the SOQ programs listed there in terms of state basic appropriation. We have the FY 17 projection and then the budget for FY, certainly in FY 2016. And so, you will note the increase and the decrease there, and I certainly think that without a lot of explanation, you can certainly follow this, this information. I think it's important to note when we look at textbooks and we have split funded, it's important to note that a part of that would be an SOQ, and the other portion would reside in lottery, in lottery, in that particular section, lottery fund section of the budget. And then, when we look at special education, in terms of the change there, there is a reduction based on enrollment, a decrease also in per pupil allocation from that of $543 in FY 2016. And in FY 2017, the per pupil allocation for special education is $523. We look also at the incentive programs, and I want to highlight, you know, compensation supplement, of course, and this is based on the governor's budget, and so, we're all aware that the governor did not propose in the first year any compensation increase. And so, it's so noted in the development of this budget. We'll move to the next slide in terms of, continue with projected revenue. And again, I think it's important to highlight here, you have the FY 2017, what we're recommending, or what I'm recommending as superintendent, and then you have, of course, the FY 2016, the budget there, and the increase and the decrease there. I think it's important just to note in terms of foster care, over the past few years, there really has been a steady decline in terms of the foster care funds that we have received. And so, I wanted to point that out. And again, if you look at the textbook, you know, you would think in terms of, do we have a decrease there? And really, we have a net increase of 197, but again, you have to look between the... to look between the SOQ and the lottery in terms of the difference there. And, and each year, you know, obviously with the development of the budget and each new biennium, you go back and look, and sometimes you move, things are moved from one category to the next, or one line to the next, and so here we have that. And so again, you will look and, and note in terms of the, the total increase in terms of projected revenue, and we pointed that out earlier. And so let's look at the operating revenue by, by source. You know, the state revenue, which really includes sales tax, accounts for six to two point four percent of the total revenue, or almost two-thirds of the total, while the local contribution accounts for over one-third in terms of the budget and other cer- other sources. You, you will note that we have highlighted there. Federal revenue includes impact aid and reimbursements for fifty percent of certainly of also the ROTC instructor salaries are included, and we have ten instructors throughout the four high schools. When we look at the miscellaneous revenue, it, it includes student fees, Medicaid reimbursement, interest income, indirect cost recovery, reimbursement from Fund Fifty-One for administrative costs, cell tower in terms of the leases that we have there, and some other miscellaneous items that are included. We move to expenditure appropriations. And so obviously, you know, we look at the revenue, and then we look at the expenditure side. We always need to have a good handle on where we expect the funds to come from in terms of the, the source of the revenue, and then obviously not unlike any other budgets that you have reviewed, we also then look at the, the expense side, or money will come in this way and go out. And so we have highlighted here, most categories largely reflected the impact of the three percent salary increase and the VRS and health insurance increases, and so you will, you will note that. In particular, if you look at increase in category four, certainly it reflects, you know, the raises, the addition of five school security officers, self-insurance increase to risk management, and contract escalations are also noted within category four. And so you have the expenditure appropriations so noted there. And so then we get into the expenditures by category. Clearly, without question, we know that the bulk of, of our, our budget, nearly three quarters goes to our core goal of, of instruction, and part of the funding in tech, technology is also instructional. And so this gives, and where the budget should really reside, because our core business is that of teaching and learning, and so we would certainly expect the largest percentage of the budget to reside on the instructional side of the ledger. And so what are some of the expenditure pressures? Of course, we mentioned the health insurance increase, and so you will see the, the pressure in terms of that particular pressure, the VRS rate changes, the governor's instructional positions, city costs, which certainly include net increases for risk management, self-insurance, the property, liability, auto, malpractice, and so forth, school resource officers, consolidated procurement, and so forth with, within, in the, the city cost. We have New Horizons, of course, as Hampton, our share of participation in the Special Ed Center, the Governor's School, and the CTE, the Career and Technical Education, Career and Technical Education Programs, and it assumes a three percent salary increase there. Three SOQ required guidance counselors. You'll see the contract escalations noted there, mandated instructional assistants, those that were needed in terms of special education services and their IEP-driven. The academies partnership, the Ford NGL fee, and that's thirty thousand over the next three, three years, with five thousand in professional development. We have legal fees that are just associated with the nature of the work that we're involved in on a daily basis. Substitute school security officers based on actual expense trends. Hybrid disability insurance, the cost of employer-provided disability insurance for new hybrid VRS plan employees, and I think this is the first year that we have had to offer the hybrid insurance, and so we have approximately about four hundred, thereabout employees almost at this particular point, who are impacted in terms of the hybrid plan. And then we have the, also the Fair Labor Standards Act, changes based on a new salary threshold for exempt employees. The minimum will be increased to twenty-four, twenty-five per hour, and we expect that, that will certainly come into play pretty soon, and so we have already been, received information, and so through human resources, we're moving forward in a proactive way to address that particular pressure. Compensation study software maintenance, I mentioned earlier of the compensation study, and we certainly want to have in place the support software to maintain the compensation system provided as a part of the compensation study. The rent escalations, we have included here as a pressure, the Affordable Care Act mandated reporting, escalation for rent, of course, at the Aluminum Drive, and of course, Coliseum with our graduation and so forth. And it also includes software costs relative to, as I mentioned, the Affordable Care Act health insurance reporting requirements. Interpreters increase based on actual expense trends, and we're certainly serving more ESL, English as a Second Language, families. And then we also have a recognition in terms of Teacher of the Year, which includes one thousand for award of the Teacher of the Year, plus some professional development opportunity in terms of five thousand included in, in there for professional development during the year of that particular Teacher of the Year, the reign of that Teacher of the Year. We'll move to expenditure savings. Of course, we have the employee retirement system and a cost savings there, E-Rate, copier, review, a cost savings there, and each year, there is the process of looking in terms of asking departments to review opportunities for cost savings, and so we have E-Rate, copier review, of course, with E-Rate funds that we're able to apply for specific needs in terms of technology that will assist, and so that will help to offset certainly the local contribution and the need for additional local contributions, so we have a cost savings there. Per pupil allocations, a slight decrease there, and, and then discontinue one of the programs that we currently have in place. And so you'll see expenditure as noted there. Recommended budget additions, and so we've talked about revenue, we have talked about at a very high broad level expenditures, we've talked about the drivers for developing the budget in terms of the student enrollment and the composite index, especially on the state side of the, of the ledger in terms of revenue and, and so forth. And now let's get into some of the recommended budget additions in particular. And I mentioned earlier, as a priority of the board and speaking with one voice, the school board, those persons who, the community members who participated in the community's priority work, priorities workshop, along with internal and external stakeholders, who certainly highlighted the importance of compensation in going forward, and so this budget certainly reflects an increase of three percent in terms of compensation. Two instructional coaches, and these positions were added by, and really driven by special education in place of two teaching positions, and the purpose really is to make certain that we build capacity of our special educators through job embedded professional development opportunities, similar to the role of that, of, of our Title One instructional coaches and the roles that they, that they have. And we believe that this strategy will certainly help us to continue to support the efforts in terms of meeting the needs of, of students with any opportunities as we go forward in, in terms of special education services there. School security officers. We've noted the increase there. Five or two secondary teachers just driven by the need, one academies director. I've talked about the academies, and so you're very familiar with fact of bringing in and hiring and, and having as a priority, and really that of an academy's director to help guide the work as we move forward. Two one-to-one support positions as we go forward. One behavior specialist, offering support in terms of our special education services. And then when we look at miscellaneous or other position changes, you'll note those particular changes that we have highlighted, and these changes include items such as career progression and other highlights in terms of changes based upon the calendar for our school security officers from one hundred and eighty to one hundred and eighty-one days to provide additional professional development, and also an increase to the tutor, temporary teacher rate from twenty-two to twenty-five dollars an hour, and a summer credit recovery program for rising seniors, and a change of the rate for bus lot attendance. And then we have lab facilitator at Bridgeport, largely funded by departmental reductions. Part-time assistant principal added to, we're recommending that we would add one-to-one of our elementary schools, Armstrong, so the current shared position could be put at Tucker Capps full-time in going forward, and the part-time AP will give certainly Armstrong more hours per day than they currently, than they currently have. Guidance counselors, you'll note the point five guidance counselor, as noted here, was added at one of our elementary schools, so that the current shared position could be certainly focused at one school and provide more time at, at Armstrong, and then have a full-time at, at Tucker Capps. Non-personnel HVAC roofing, painting, and security, and I don't think I need to go into the details there, but certainly would be willing to, to do so, and we believe that it will allow us to be preventative in nature, and also for the first time in many years to really address some of those pride initiatives in terms of the painting and, and so forth. And we have so many wonderful volunteers, and so this will continue as we move forward and only strengthen that partnership with, with the community in going forward. Pre-K, special ed, CTE, that we highlighted, and then, of course, software, and then mileage is, that's really driven by the actual cost. So what are some of the recommended budget reductions? Three elementary teachers, and again, when we say that, I think it's very important for me to say in general that it's based on student enrollment. And two special education teachers, one speech-language pathologist, and again, I talked about that earlier in terms of the trade-off when we look at the behavior specialists, and that would be a trade-off. Seven kindergarten instructional assistants, and then non-personnel department reductions, of course, information technology, Bridgeport Academy, and adult education, and with Bridgeport Academy, a little trade-off in terms of the lab facilitator, and so you, you have the difference here. And then adult education. So really want to highlight for you the budget summary. And we start in terms of FY two thousand and seventeen approved budget, and then we look at attrition, and when we look at the attrition, of course, primarily we're looking at savings identified from the total cost of salaries and benefits for employees here in terms of previous year. And then we look at the FY two thousand and seventeen base budget. When we go from FY seventeen, and then we look at the attrition, and then we have the FY two thousand and seventeen base budget, we then go into the expenditure pressures. I talked about that earlier. Expenditure savings, those cost savings, budget additions, I highlighted earlier, budget deductions, and then the FY proposed operating budget, and then the FY seventeen projected revenue, and you will note the budget gap. And so here are the assumptions that we have when we talk about the, the gap, the budget gap, that's a little over one million, and that's based on the following assumptions. The gap is based on the fact that the current House and Senate budgets offer us a range of one hundred and nine thousand to seven hundred and sixty-one thousand in additional revenue, and both budgets offer more flexibility to, to divisions in terms of by removing the requirement to hire eighteen SOQ positions that reside currently in the governor's budget. And we anticipate receiving, of course, final General Assembly budget by the week of March the fourteenth, and if we keep our fingers crossed, it may be sooner than that. I think other information that, that's very important, given the priority in terms of compensation in the development of this particular budget, we thought that it would be important to really just highlight where we currently reside when we look at our current position with our entry teacher salary, and why it's so important in going forward in terms of making certain that, that this is a priority for us. We want to be competitive and to have a competitive position, and we understand that regardless of whether we're a small or large school division, the competition is very great in terms of attracting and retaining exceptional, an exceptional staff. And so when we summarize the budget, the recommended budget is built on the identified goals of our strategic plan and feedback from stakeholders, maximize every child's learning, we go again back to the strategic plan, attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, create safe and nurturing environment. And then a summary here, three percent average salary increase for, for all employees. School security officers, we've highlighted there, and also put the strategic goal And also, put the strategic goal area next to each of the budget initiatives going forward. And I'll end just with this quote. "Education is not the problem. It's the solution, and education is not an expense. It's an investment." And so, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam Chair, that certainly concludes the superintendent's report. And relative to the development of this particular budget, the recommended operating budget for FY 2017. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Questions or comments from board members for Dr. Smith on the budget? Mrs. Henry?
First, I just want to compliment Dr. Smith and the Finance Department for giving us a budget that's complete and specific and focused. I know you must feel like you're walking in quicksand when you're developing a budget when you have no specific firm figures from the state and you don't have figures from the locality yet. We're all doing this on our best guesses and our best estimates. And that's, I know, very frustrating. And we hope we'll get the firm information back in. As a board member, we've had a chance to ask questions individually and understand some of this. I hope that we remind the public that the next two weeks particularly, actually, the next three weeks, we're going to be here to hear your comments and your opportunity to ask questions. I do hope that those comments will include support for funding, even if there's currently a gap for our staff increases, which are beyond needed. And while you're asking and supporting that, advocate with our localities and with the state folks who still haven't voted to, as much as possible, to support salary increases for our staff by increasing the funding for us on the state and local level. That's my unsolicited commercial announcement for today.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments from board members on Dr. Smith's presentation? Mrs. Smith?
Again, just to stress again, thank you all so much. It's so much work to put into this, and it shows. And it's nice to see additions finally coming through. Just a couple of comments, really no questions. I was a little disappointed not to see supplements restored, as you know. But I am pleased to see that that is in the plan moving forward, that a study will be happening so that we can be restoring those or even improving upon those. And so, I look forward to that. And thank you for stressing that this is just the beginning of compensation. Because when you look at the chart that you showed with how we compare to other divisions, that's just where we are now. But with them increasing their rates and giving raises, we need the 3% just to stay maintained. We're not increasing our competitiveness, really. So, we really, really need this 3%, if not a lot more. So, this is just the beginning. So, I'm glad you stressed that. And those are all my comments. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Samuels?
Dr. Smith and the executive leadership team, this is an extremely comprehensive report. And I am extremely pleased that it supports, supported an increase for staff members. And I have two questions. Based on the report that I believe, you know, the community may would like to know. On page 22, the 19,000 for the expenditure pressures, the $19,000 for the academies, that will be spread out over a three-year period.
That is correct.
So, which each year, then, $30,000 will be within the budget.
That is correct.
However, there's an additional $5,000 expense. And so, will that additional $5,000, will that be a reoccurring cost over the next three years?
Yeah, it's not my understanding that it would be a recurring cost.
Okay, and that is for professional development?
That is professional.
Okay. And my second question, in reference to the budget addition for the support.
Yes, sir.
Support staff, the initiative, the one-to-one initiative. How will these two support positions support the one-to-one initiative? And could you elaborate more on the funding source?
Sure. Let me start with the funding source. And so, the funding source would be that of Fund 50. And so, that would be the funding source. So, if you adopt this budget, then, of course, the funding source would be that of Fund 50 on the school board's side of the ledger. And the primary focus of the positions would be that of providing the technical support in terms of our one-to-one initiative, which is critical and very important as we go forward. As you know, we have begun to really address and building from places of strength with regards to the one-to-one initiative. And we have a cyber café on the PD side, the professional development side, that we're launching. And we also have this year, a train, the trainer's model in working with individuals in terms of the best practices. And we have also launched the digital bridge, highlighting best practices in the school division. And so, this would really provide the technical support. The current inventory is 17,000, about 17, a little over 17,000, about 17,400 computers and 10,000, close to 11,000, 10,800 iPads. And so, we anticipate that by the fall of 2016, our total count of devices is projected to be about 30,000. And so, that then gives the rationale for those particular positions.
So, the capacity is growing.
It's growing.
So, we need the manpower to support the capacity.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Pearson?
Dr. Smith, I'm especially happy that you clearly noted that even though we're getting four-plus million dollars from the state, that there are expenditure pressures. Sometimes, the public does not see the second half of that equation. And they think that we're getting $4 million and we can do all kinds of wonderful things with $4 million, especially unfunded mandates that we receive every year from the state. I have a question about the budget gap, which is $1,095,000. Now, you're saying that that's based on the assumption that we do not have to fund the 18 standards of quality positions?
That's correct.
And if we do, then the gap would be larger than this?
Actually, it's right. It's actually assuming, at this particular point, the gap is based on those 18 positions. So, those 18 positions currently reside in this recommended budget. However, if indeed, with the General Assembly's adopted budget, we get greater flexibility, that will help us to address the current gap of a little over $1 million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions or comments from board members for Dr. Smith? Our student liaison? You're never quiet up there. Okay. I also want to publicly commend the finance team for their work on the budget and commend them with coming forward with what is the happiest budget time we've ever had. Not to say that it's perfect yet, but certainly, well, I shouldn't say we've ever had, but it's, in terms of my tenure on the board, it's the happiest budget time I can recall. And that's eight years of budget work. And so, I'm really happy to see where we are with the budget. Certainly, we are currently looking at a gap. And just to reiterate a little bit about what Mrs. Henry said tonight, the fact remains that school boards do not appropriate their own funding. That is done by our state and by our local city council. They are our appropriating body. And so, we are dependent upon them to meet our fiscal needs as a school division. And state code provides that school boards present to their appropriating bodies their budget of need. And this is what this board and, in support of Dr. Smith's and the administration's proposal tonight, what we believe is the need of this division. And in particular, Dr. Smith, you did highlight compensation. That has certainly been a large part of our discussions as a board and certainly as a community. We have heard from high and low that compensation is an area that we absolutely must address. And so, we are happy to see that it is built into the budget and that we are at 3% at this current moment. And that there, you know, there is a potential for filling that gap in some way, shape, or form. And I did have a question on, there's an operating revenue source. And Dr. Smith, I don't expect you'll answer this right here on the spot. But perhaps Ms. Scott and the team could look at this. In the operating revenue by source, we have the local contribution at 35.8%. And then, you have the state revenues and sales tax. I'd be interested to know what the local contribution percentages are for our neighboring communities in the region and potentially across the Commonwealth and where we kind of fall into that whole scheme of things. And if there are any other questions, no other questions, just thank you very much, Dr. Smith, for a very comprehensive report for us tonight. And we look forward to hearing from the public at our budget hearings that are coming up next week and the week after and as we prepare to vote on this budget and present it to our council by April 1st.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent's and staff reports tonight. That was enough to take care of us for tonight. A lot to digest as board members and as a community. And so, we'll move from superintendent and staff reports to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written proclamations or petitions. And I have two requests to speak tonight. I'm sorry, I lost for words, was trying to read off the form. Our first speaker on the list is David Narvid. David Narvid?
Narvid.
Narvid. That's an R. I'm so sorry. David Narvid? Greg? Maybe I was reading David out of the Narvid. I'm so sorry. Greg. If you'll come forward, sir.
Madam Chair, do you want the protocol read?
Yes, please. Just one moment. We won't start the clock on you, but if you will just hold tight for our clerk to present our protocol for public speaking.
And if it please the chair, I'm going to do it for Ms. Bowers, given her voice.
She is had a cough. Okay.
The protocol for public comment, period. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment, period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input. Thank you.
No personal attacks, so I can't run for president. My name is Greg Narvid. I'm an assistant football coach at Keketown High School, and I've been a coach in the Hampton City Schools since 1988. And I'm here to address the supplement issue, which I'm glad to hear that we're going to study to see what we can do about it. That's good. It's been three years. Didn't take that long to plan D-Day, but moving it along. As you're all aware, 20, you know, three years ago, our supplements were cut 25%. And the first we heard about it was when we read the Daily Press that our supplements were cut 25%. I'm going to talk about football, you know, the football supplements, because that's my area of expertise. It's not, you know, it's not that I think we're more important than band directors or class sponsors. I know how hard those people work, all right? But as a football coach, I want to point some things out, because maybe we're not all aware of the situation. As an assistant football coach, my supplement is a total of under $2,000. That is not just for the football season. It's for anything, everything that happens in the offseason. Because ironically, at almost exactly the same time that our supplements got cut, the VHSL passed a rule that allowed us to practice in the offseason. So, at the same time we're getting less money, we got more work. So, all the stuff we do in the offseason, weightlifting, seven-on-sevens, camps, clinics, et cetera. Nothing extra for it. Years ago, speaking of clinics, we used to get some money to go to clinics to improve on our coaching skills. That all comes out of pocket now. Now, about the $2,000 that I get as an assistant football coach, it's by far the lowest in the area, all right? It was the lowest in the area before we cut it. Assistant coaches in Newport News get paid more than head coaches in Hampton. The $2,500 before the cut had not been increased since 1999. And when it increased in 1999, it was by a grand total of, I think, 60 bucks or something like that. Once again, I realize we have problems, but, and again, I'm not just talking for football coaches. I know everybody else that has, you know, I know how hard class sponsors work, band directors, you know. We all work hard. And to be honest with you, restoring our supplements would be the fair thing to do, especially if you're interested in keeping good people in the city of Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Narvid. Our next speaker is Ms. Anne Stevens, Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Smith for giving a very good budget presentation. It was easy to follow and easy to understand. So, that was good to see. I'm here representing the Hampton branch NAACP as its vice president. A couple of weeks ago, on February 24th, I had the opportunity to attend a Black History reception at the Governor's Mansion. And during that time, I talked to First Lady Dorothy McAuliffe about her passion as it relates to the breakfast program and the initiative to fight hunger for children. So, naturally, I was very pleased, as was the, as were the other members of the NAACP, to read in yesterday's newspaper that we were piloting such a program and that it was at Phillips, I believe, and would be at two other schools. I also had an opportunity to speak to Lincoln Saunders. He's the chief of staff for the First Lady. And I was telling him about the article in the paper, and he did say that he was very pleased, as was Mrs. McAuliffe, that Hampton was moving forward in this direction. And while I know to have 100%, which is what everybody would want, would have some serious budget implications, I thought I should at least tell you that as far as those people concerned who want to fight this hunger piece for our children, they are very pleased with the direction in which Hampton is moving. I'm sure that you all always have, excuse me, have some policies and processes in place to move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. We'll move on to items for action, beginning with item 5.01, the proposed 2016-2017 school calendar and 2017-18 planning calendar. We were presented details on the calendars at our meeting last week. And I know there was one addition suggested by Mrs. Smith. Did that get incorporated on the tagline?
Yes, ma'am.
And are there any questions or is there a motion?
Madam Chair, and I move approval of the 2016-17 school calendar and the 2017-18 planning calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve the proposed 2016-17 school calendar and the 2017-18 planning calendar. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I was just reminded by someone who is working in another district that it's so good that we have this regional calendar and that we have spring break when it is, even though it's not at Easter, because when Easter moves around, it's, the effects are disastrous for SOL testing if spring break follows it. So, kudos again to the committee that presented this to us. It's a big advantage for us to have the regional calendar that we do.
Thank you, Mrs. Henry. Are there any other comments? If not, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the revision of school board policy AC, non-discrimination. We have a variety of additional policies actually from item 5.02 through 5.15. Are there specific policies that board members would desire to pull out for discussion, or do we want to adopt these in the form of a block?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 5.02 through 5.15.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Harper that we approve tonight's policy revisions, beginning with policy AC, non-discrimination. Policy GBA, equal opportunity employer. Policy GBA-R, equal employment opportunity, non-discrimination complaint procedure. Policy GBAB, discriminatory harassment and retaliation. Policy GBAB-E, employee information bulletin. Policy GBAB-R, discriminatory harassment retaliation complaint procedure. Policy GBAC, standards of conduct. Policy GBACCA, which is the prohibition of bullying staff members. Policy IB, academic freedom. Policy JB, equal educational opportunities. Policy GJ, excuse me, BAA, Section 504, non-discrimination policy and grievance procedures. Policy JFCEA, gang activity or association. Policy LC, charter schools. Policy LC-E, charter school application addendum. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to deliberation. We begin with item 6.01, which is the revision of school board policy GCBE holidays. Are there any additional comments or deliberative items for board members on policy GCBE? There being none, we'll move on to item 6.02, which is the revision of school board policy JFCC, student conduct and safety rules on school buses.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kilgore?
In the second paragraph, which is now a new paragraph, I see that we changed principal to building administrator/designee, but we did not change it in the first sentence of that the driver shall report misconduct of students on the school bus to the school principal?
That will be changed.
Okay. And that'll, that same comment will apply to the next policy as well.
Policy EEACC?
Yes.
So noted, Ms. Reeves?
Yes.
Any other comments from board members on policy JFCC or EEACC? Student conduct and safety rules on school buses or student conduct and safety rules on school buses? Well, that's just interesting, isn't it?
Their identical policies, just different sections.
Yep, yep.
No other comments or questions on those. Moving on to item 6.04, the revision of school board policy JGE, student long-term suspension or expulsion. Any comments or questions or additional deliberation? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, one comment on the section on reinstatement. It talks about the student may petition the school board. So, if a student's under the age of 17, this could possibly go to the school board for appeal and have no type of parental involvement or even knowledge necessarily of a reinstatement. And if the student's under 17 and that parent is comfortable with where that student's alternatively placed, or, I just believe somehow for the, for the under 17, we should have something in there about parental consent of that or a sign-off or, I don't know what that would look like exactly, but I think there should be parental input in that wording somewhere. Over 18 and over, of course, they are an adult and should be able to do that themselves, I guess, but. So, if you see in that section six.
Can I suggest that perhaps we do something like that student with parental consent may petition the school board?
Yes. Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves.
I knew you could come up with something.
Scrolling down the page feverishly, trying to figure out what would be good.
It would be on line three, part six. So, it'll now read, "When a student has been expelled permanently, that student with parental consent may petition the school board."
Yes.
Is that okay?
Item 6.05, revision of school board policy GBBB, acceptable use policy. Any comments? Questions or additional deliberation on this particular item? There being none, we'll move on to item 606, which is the revision of school board policy GBBD, social media use. Any comments, questions, additional deliberation from board members regarding this revision? There being none, we'll move on to item 6.07, which is the revision of school board policy JED, attendance policy. Any comments, questions, additional deliberation from board members on this particular revision? Basically, has language added to clarify our current practice in administering that The last item on our deliberation is the revision of school board policy JP, all electronic devices. I think everyone received a written copy of this particular policy at your seat tonight. And there was additional language added, as you will see on page two. At the top of the page, the first paragraph, at the end of the first paragraph, we were changing that devices may be used inside the school building or facility after school hours and now adds language, "So long as use does not interfere with any after-school academic tutoring, remediation, or testing." Are there any objections to interjecting that revision? So, that will move forward as amended.
Those who are talking about smartphones and essentially there, I mean, we, I know a lot of these reforms have to do with being generic so that we're not limited to describing what kind of device, but this is essentially the thing that has to be turned off that we have to believe students about is their smartphone.
Well, this is under the section of cellular phones.
Right, okay.
Carries over to the second page, if you see the bullet at the bottom of the first page.
Gotcha, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to confirm, this will also make it into the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook?
That was what I was just going to comment on. Yes, if you all determine next week on action to accept this addition, then Ms. McKeithen will add this line before it goes to print in the Rights and Responsibilities.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. That concludes deliberation and takes us into deliberation. First read, item 7.01 is the revision of school board policy EFC, vending machines, sale of food items. And to speak to that policy is Ms. Scott.
Good evening. The update we're making to this policy is to align with recent changes in city ordinances regarding sales of food on or near public property. And so, we have added a section to prohibit the sale of, basically to disallow food trucks on school property is the gist of this, but the language comes from the city ordinance so that we mirror the city ordinance.
Okay, I got confused when I read it. It sounds like you can't set up your table to sell the stuff for the booster game.
No, it's talking about commercial food establishments.
Yeah, but it doesn't sound like that. I mean, I think that has to be framed some other way a little bit.
I agree. I was confused the same way.
Because I looked at that and thought, come on.
Okay. Is it meant for outside the school building?
It's really directed at food trucks, commercial, the hot dog vendor, the burrito vendor. It's not directed at school functions where students may be doing fundraisers or the PTA or our own food service department.
What if the PTA is using a food truck as a fundraiser?
I think it needs to say by outside individuals somewhere in this sentence, and that would kind of, by other than school affiliated organizations would kind of take care of that maybe.
Okay. I will work with Ms. Reeves and see if we can come up with some modified language that makes it a little clearer.
I can understand that you don't want bunches of people coming up at lunchtime selling hot dogs from the food truck, but, you know, the boosters sell every corner they can think of on every kind of.
Understood. Understood.
Yeah, and the carnivals, school carnivals have hot dog carts come.
Yeah, we'll work on clarifying that.
And there's even stuff inside the building, like the mobile carts they use for double lines during cafeteria hours. And, I mean, there's just a whole lot of temporary structures that serve food and it doesn't really say where or when, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, yep, we'll work on that.
But as I understand that, this is somehow connected to a city code change.
The, yeah, the language was pulled from the city ordinance, but we'll see if we can't modify it to make it a little clearer in terms of the distinction between school functions and the intent here.
So, maybe a little additional tweaking on the language, but I think this is in connection with some city policy that we're trying to align ourselves with. And I wasn't sure in reading it whether this meant, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm, whether this meant after school or any other.
Well, we already have protected times, you know, in terms of our wellness policy, well, really during school hours, but this is directed at any time.
Okay. So, yeah, I think maybe some more clarity on the language would be helpful for us, particularly in terms of having administrators enforce it and so forth.
Okay. We'll go back and see if we can't make it a little clearer, the distinction.
Thank you.
Okay, just so you understand where we pulled it from, we'll work on it, but the new city ordinance has an absolute, a definition of mobile vendors. And mobile vendors are described as by any person from any temporary structure, including but not limited to, any table or stand or other motor vehicle. So, this came directly out of the newly passed city ordinance. So, we don't want to divert too much from it, other than to clarify what we need.
Well, even the word "mobile vendor" written on this policy, so maybe even just the addition of that, that it's a mobile vendor, and maybe we want to reference the ordinance.
Like, just call it "mobile vendor not affiliated with the school division," and then something.
And potentially make a reference to the ordinance, the city ordinance to, or reference. I don't know if we ever do that, but probably not a bad.
I know that we ever have, but.
We've not done that before.
Right. I don't know that we've ever needed to, but in this particular case, I know there are people that are very passionate about food vendor trucks.
So, not affiliated with the school division, but can it be affiliate, I'm confused, because can it be affiliated with a school activity? Because you may not be affiliated with the division, but if we're having an activity like a field day or something that we want to bring on a vendor, is that no longer avail, you know, available to do so or?
That's what the ordinance implies.
Right. That, that we're saying that mobile vendors that are, that are, they are not going to be allowed on. You can have them out on the public street, but you can't have them on school property.
Okay.
That was the recommendation of the Policy Review Committee as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We'll talk about it when.
We've had some very interesting conversations about this at my house, actually, so.
Yes.
Any other questions on the food vending? Okay, item 7.02 is the revision of school board policy IICA, field trips, excursions, and overnight field trips.
Good evening.
Hi, Dr. Woods.
Yes, IICA being proposed to revise relative to field trips, the, we will continue to approve in accordance with the procedures outlined in IICA set forth, with the policy language modified to remove the requirement that the board approves the overnight sections of the trips.
Are there questions for Dr. Woods on this revision proposal? And the rationale for that would be?
We would proceed with how we do with the other field trips, superintendent approval
Okay, we'll chat some more.
Okay.
Moving on to item 7.03, ILC, use and dissemination of test results. We just have a variety of everybody to talk to us tonight.
Good evening.
Hi, Dr. Cagriano.
There are a few suggested minor edits to policy ILC. We have, of course, the his/her in the first paragraph there. And then, the second paragraph, the committee is proposing to strike when ready, as currently we already have, even in kindergarten, these types of conversations taking place between teachers and students. And then, lastly, you've heard particularly during the first semester, a lot of conversation about C equals I equals A, so the linkage between curriculum instruction and assessment. about C equals I equals A, so the linkage between curriculum instruction and assessment. So we thought it would be pertinent and fitting to embed assessment in that last paragraph as well.
Questions or comments from board members? Clarity, okay. Thank you, Dr. Cargiano. And you have the next one, which is policy IM, evaluation of instructional programs.
Yes, policy IM, as you can tell with what we've submitted, no significant suggested edits other than a few modifications to how the dates are formatted down at the bottom and then capitalizing D for division in that last sentence, just to remain consistent with other policies.
Any questions for Dr. Cargiano on this revision proposal? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
There being no additional deliberation first reads, we'll move on to our informational items. The next meeting of this school board will be held with an emphasis on our 2016-17 budget. Our public hearings, March 16, 23, and 30, public hearings on the budget will be held on March 16 and 23rd. All meetings will be held at 6:30 PM at Jones Magnet Middle School. Informational items, Dr. Smith, any?
No further business from the superintendent, Madam Chair.
You have had plenty to say tonight, but we would certainly entertain any other informational items you had for us. School board members, any informational items for the good of the order? Mr. Samuels?
Madam Chair, you may know, but March is National Social Work Month, and I can remember when I was a young person or a young social worker, how elated I was when I heard the words, "We appreciate the work you do for the children and families." And I just wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation to all of our school social workers under the leadership of Dr. Bruce Copeland, and I wish them continued success as they continue to provide the necessary and needed service to our children and families in our division.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Other comments or informational items from board members? Mr. Harper?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Hampton City Schools lost a retired valuable employee last week, Ms. Pat Kovas. She was a longtime teacher at Bumpel, a longtime worker with young students, athletes, anything that you would relate to as far as kids and sports, academics, Ms. Kovas was there, so I'd give her a shout-out and wish her much success in her next ventures. Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely. Any other informational items from board members? If there's nothing further to come before this board, then this meeting is adjourned.